Yeah, I think I made motion.
Oh, did you?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I knew that.
Hey, John. Hi, Walter.
Good. That's all mine.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, March 2nd City Council meeting. Clerk, let me just spell the role.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glenn.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Harding.
Here.
Alderman Mahavet.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
And here's that.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comment. I would like to notify everyone that it's a three-minute, so if you can go ahead and give your public comment, you do have three minutes. So first person that's on here is Chris Freeman. Please state your name and address for public record.
Please. Do I have to adjust this?
Yeah, I actually pushed that off.
That's fine. My name is Chris Freeman, and I'm from Cary, Illinois, and I'm here representing a nonprofit that I'm starting up, chapter president here, called Sleep in Heavenly Peace. We build bunk beds for kids that are sleeping on the floor or sleeping in unfavorable conditions, like tootled bed or on a couch. I started doing this in January and just putting it out there, going around. McHenry County is my territory, and everything north of Elgin and Kane County is our territory. So what we do is we provide tools and supplies and teach volunteers how to build bunk beds at what we call Build Day. It's about three hours long, and in three hours, we build about twenty beds. And then in the following weeks after the build, we take volunteers and we go disperse the beds in the rooms where the kids need them. They get a mattress. We provide a pillow, sheets, and a blanket. So when we're done, the kids have a complete new bed. It's free to the kids. The service is done through donations and volunteers, and I just wanted to let McHenry County know that you're my territory, and that's what we do.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Any questions?
All right. Meanwhile, thank you, Grandma. Appreciate it.
Randy? Leggie? Is that right?
It's Leggie.
Oh, Leggie. I knew it was Leggie. I apologize. From Pioneer Center. Please state your name and address for public record.
Will do. Yeah, Randy Leggie of Crystal Lake, Illinois. Worked for Pioneer Center from McHenry County. We are building a new shelter, if you've heard. We are here tonight to tell you a little bit of an update on that. We're happy to say that we started constructing two weeks ago, so it's exciting to finally see that happening. We have received enough funding for that part of the project. There's a couple of things that will be prior to Phase Two, but we have started construction, and we are planning on finishing up construction at the end of May with a June 1st opening date, as of now. For some of you that may not be as familiar with the pad shelter, it's currently in Woodstock. We served 220 people last year, which included 11 families and 25 children. That shelter in Woodstock has now currently 34 beds. Due to research done by the county and us, the perceived need for our county was 70 beds, so that...
Yeah.
We'll be right next. We want to maintain what we've seen that we're possible. So that's where we'll figure out exactly where that bus stop is. It'll be adjacent to that pond.
Alderman.
Yeah, the reservations aren't so much of somebody walking into fireworks as much as the fact that the people that are sitting out there that have been waiting for fireworks, fireworks get started, and there's people tricking over to get beer. So I just think to some extent, especially when it's last call and everybody wants to rush in there, people spilling drinks and everything else, it's dark already, I just think to some extent it would be whoofus to back it off to work by 9:15, that the passing out at 9 o'clock for the tickets, 9:15, as far as...
Alderman Miller.
Having participated in almost every piece of that puzzle, ticket sales, beer service, helping the police flip the tables over so that nobody can get another beer, I think consistency is the key to success. And if this is the model that's been consistent, I think that's what we need to stay with, because that's what the population that comes to that event gets. They know when they can buy their last ticket. They know when they can get their last beer. And if we're now interjecting fireworks, which I love the idea of putting fireworks in this concept, they're going to go get their beer, go find a place to sit or migrate to and enjoy their beverage. So I think consistency is the key to success, and if this is what we've posted in the past, it would be harder to change that for that night than it would be to stay on the same page where all the repeat people are used to. So having worked every one of those lines, I think it would be easier just to say 9:30 is your last ticket, 9:45 is last call, we're flipping the tables at 9:47, and we're done. And by then fireworks are started and people are in the field. So I'm in support of the ordinance request.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council?
Alderman. Yeah, I just want to state that we're talking about consistency. If we were consistent, we wouldn't be doing away with the Saturday sidewalk sale. We wouldn't be taking and moving the fireworks to this date. So we're not being consistent on anything else, and in this case, things have changed. It's not consistent. We are having fireworks out there. People are filling the park, spreading out their blankets and everything else, and they don't need all this foot traffic for last call for beer. You could say some people will walk straight and some won't, and, you know, and you could say you never know what. It's just, to me, I think it would be whoofus to just back it off a half hour and be done with it. And that's where I'll leave it, so...
Any other comments?
So if anyone wants to make a motion, that's fine with me.
Any other comments? No. I'm looking for a motion for 5E as presented. Alderman Miller.
I'll make the motion to approve 5E as proposed.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
No.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Harding.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is individual action items, 6A, approval of a liquor license transfer from McHenry County Club, Country Club, Food for Thought LLC to Kelsey Number Three LLC. Minister of Warfield?
Yeah, and just a slight correction. It's not a transfer. It's issuance of a new liquor license. So in short, as identified in the supplement, the Country Club notified us, staff, that the bar/restaurant leasing agreement with the current operator, Food for Thought LLC, would not be renewed past March 10th. Kelsey Number Three LLC has entered into a restaurant/bar agreement with the Country Club to take over effective March 11th. Also doing business as Metalwood Grill, but not a transfer of the business, would be a new class A liquor license. And just so council's aware, when a business chooses not to renew a liquor license, that number is automatically reduced. So in order to get that license back, new business or LLC needs to come before council to grant a liquor license. So that's, in this case, is to, the motion would be to grant the issuance of a class A liquor license to Kelsey Number Three LLC doing business as Metalwood Grill effective March 11th, 2020.
Discussion on this item? Alderman Schaefer.
Have you met with him there, with Bassett and all that?
Yeah, yeah. So the chief also has met with... Did you meet with?
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and also she used to operate Casey's Cabin, so she's, she knows what she's doing.
Oh, yeah.
Alderman Butler.
Just for curiosity, does that mean the bar is going to open up to the public, or is that just going to wind up still being two numbers? It looks like Alderman Santee has the answer.
It's open to the public.
Yeah, it's been open to the public.
Is it? Because I know they've had those signs up there.
Yeah, it's open to the public.
It is open to the public.
Yeah. Alderman Santee.
So just to confirm, it looks like according to the documents here, she's had a, and this has got to be state or what's, it's different county, but she's had a liquor license for over 15 years, correct? She has. She's had two different businesses, but the most recent one that's on the application is Casey's Cabin for over 10 years.
And all background checks been done?
She passed with flying colors. Plus, she also had gaming successful with no violations from the state during the time that she had Casey's Cabin, since gaming was legal.
And just to verify, Casey's Cabin was Lake County, right? Is that Lake or that McHenry?
No, it's McHenry County, unincorporated McHenry County. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions coming? Open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? C9 going back for a motion for 6A is presented. Alderman Schaefer.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Alderman Harding. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Harding.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6B, approval of a video gaming application for Kelsey Number Three LLC, Metalwood Grill. Minister of Warfield?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So based on the action that the council just took regarding this item with the liquor license, they are, Kelsey Number Three LLC is requesting, and just to give the public some background, last year, the council separated the approval of liquor licensing from video gaming licensing, making them two separate action items to provide the opportunity for businesses to apply for and receive liquor licenses independent from gaming licenses. But to be able to have a gaming license, you need to have the liquor license. So this is a request by Kelsey Number Three LLC for a video gaming license for five machines from the city of McHenry, and the motion would be to issue a video gaming license to Kelsey Number Three LLC doing business as Metalwood Grill located at 820 North John Street, and they would also be required to execute a video gaming development agreement with the city, which regulates signage and partitioning and video monitoring also. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Schaefer.
Does, do they have approval from the state as well?
They, they're not even in that process yet.
Do they have an applied...
Yeah.
...by council?
Let's hear it. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions coming? Alderman Glenn.
Just the fact that, oh, we were curtailing video gaming, and it just seems like more and more entities now, all of a sudden, are interested in the video gaming market, and every time we turn around and somebody wants it, they just levy for a different reason why they need it. And as it is right now, I'm sure we're still way ahead of everybody in the county as far as video gaming, and I just thought we were going to kind of control that a little bit more, and I just can't support that.
Alderman Santee.
Yeah, I see Alderman Glenn's point on this, but two things. I, as just one council member here, I am against the video gaming parlors where that is their only source, or a very high percentage is their source of income. This I see as a restaurant that has now been open to the public in, I think, at least three years that's been... That's been open to the public? I should know that, but I apologize. I think it's at least three years.
It's close to three.
Yeah, so, and, and, and it's been, it's been private for a given degree of time, but also many years ago it was like semi-private. So it was, you know, it was open, you know, to the public at that time, too. So I look at this as a restaurant that's flourished for many years and, and they're requesting to put this in as a, as a, as another item, as another benefit to the people that will go and, and enjoy some entertainment, some food and dining there. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I was just gonna state that just by the last agenda, this isn't the same restaurant. This is a different restaurant, a different owner. So the last one didn't come in looking for video gaming. Now this one comes in and the first thing they want is video gaming besides the liquor license. To me, I thought we were going to see if we were gonna have businesses that could flourish without it. And again, we have a brand-new restaurant, the way I look at it. We have a new owner, it's a new restaurant, and the same location as what lived there before. And just automatically every time somebody asks for video gaming, unless you're a parlor, we're just gonna give a video gaming license and let's just keep adding it up and see if we can double what we've got. And I just feel that we've got more than enough video gaming places in the city of McHenry and we don't need anymore.
Alderman Schaefer?
Again, I s- also like Alderman Santee and Alderman Glad, I see both sides of it. But, and, and this is one of those long-term establishments that's been in McHenry. Granted, they're trying something new with, when they went to the Metalwood Grill because of how bad the business was going. And from a membership standpoint, private country clubs are definitely hurting right now. So this was the location that stood out in the Bay. We might have that most of this, and it is, wouldn't we first agree to?
If you want to go straight to the second slide, but this is prepared, was prepared in January. We have several facets of the business that have to get together and decide operationally, sales-wise, where the market is. It is a commodities business. So obviously it's, it's sales-driven to the, to the extent of where our activities go. It's hard to see on the small screen, but if you squint, you can detect that where the grade-
We had a small budget when we did those TVs.
Yeah, there you go. There's a, the Valley View Grade School bisects the eastern portion of what Meyer owns, which is parcel A, but that's actually a permanent zone for concrete and asphalt production plants, as well as Miller Formless is over there as well, as our neighbors. But the conditional use permit that was amended was everything west of the Valley View School, which is parcels B, C, D, and E, which take you all the way west to Ridge Road. These were annexed into the city from about nineteen eighty-eight through about nineteen ninety-eight, east to west. And that section is probably about five hundred and seventy-five acres. The vast majority of it has been mined and restored. There's a large area to the, just south of Route one twenty where we have the processing plant and the stockpiling and scaling. So the trucks come in and out of that gate off of- stockpiling and scaling, so the trucks come in and out of that gate off of Route 120. We probably have five working years on the surface of the mine near the homes, all the way at the south end, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then all total, there's actually a parcel north of Route 120, you can see. That's slightly mined out, but there is a future there as well, which could extend the life of the mine another 10 years or so. Just briefly, as far as the ownership history, I'm an original Meyer Material employee, been there for about 35 years, and we acquired the mine from the Miller family, which is Miller Sand and Gravel Enterprise Ready Mix Company in 1988. And subsequent to that, Meyer was owned actually by the Pritzker family for over 50 years, and due to their family realignment, they sold us to a private equity firm, and we were ultimately purchased by a company called Aggregate Industries out of the United Kingdom. And they were owned by a Swiss company called Holson. Holson is one of the world's largest producers of Portland cement, and they produce aggregates, they produce asphalt and concrete. During the course of the recession, even Holson had fallen on, I guess, tough enough times where they actually merged with a French company called Lafarge. And today, we're all held under a company called Lafarge Holson. Locally, the brand is Lafarge Aggregates, and that's who I'm employed by today. Meyer still owns some, most of the land that's in McHenry County that was once the Meyer Material brand. Regarding the permit, the South Mine, I talked about the annexation and conditional land use permit, originally approved for that expansion in 1988. We currently have an extension to mine this, what we call the South Mine until 2026. So we're looking at about six more active years of mining. The ordinance includes restrictions on hours of operation, there's setback limits against the homes, and we're subject to mine plan review, which is why I'm here tonight.
Randy, what's the date on that aerial?
That aerial? I can't see on here, but I can take a guess that-
None of that South area has been reclaimed?
Well, it's been filled. If you really zoom in, we're trying to work both ends to the, to that point. So this, this aerial is probably two years old at least. I'd say maybe eighteen, three.
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Okay. I can just tell by how much land is there. So if you go to the next slide, it's a little bit more of a bird's eye view, and it shows you some of the property line boundaries. You can see to the east edge, oh, you lost me there. Sorry. There you go. On the, on the eastern property line of the, of the mine boundary, you have the Glacier Ridge subdivision to the north, and the Wood Creek subdivision to the south. Those are all estate lots, one acre lots, as well as to the south property line, you have the Burning Creek, Burning Tree subdivision. And we have mined all the way across that south property. We're in the process of filling and sloping the lands from west to east, all the way down to that point in the southeast corner, as well as filling from the north, from Glacier Ridge down to Wood Creek. And we do that with the material we call strippings, which is when we go into a newer cell for mining, we take that material and instead of double-handling it, the efficiencies of it, we put it on a truck and haul it to a place where it goes into a final resting place, ultimately put topsoil and vegetation over it. And it's a long process. Some, some years we strip more than others, depending on the depth of the material, the depth of the stripping material versus the depth of the deposit. So there's a lot of calculations that are going from year to year, trying to figure out which direction that we should go and how far we should go with it, because it's a big capital expense. So we're currently mining against the boundaries. The good news is anywhere you see a home adjacent to the, to the mining property, there's been an earth berm constructed, and it's vegetated, and it's fenced, and there's a setback in place. So we're dealing with really most of the mining-
Where's the crusher?
Well, I don't have a pointer, and a pointer wouldn't work on a television screen. If you know where the wooded 10-acre square is, which is, I'd say, north central in that photograph, that crusher is probably south and a little bit west of there right now. And I'll go through the, the next couple of slides, and I'll probably show you maybe more currently. But just as the highlights to where the amended conditional use permit took us, we are now operating in the field, which is where crushing of the material takes place, just to get it out of conveyor belt, and then we convey it to the processing center. We're at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I don't think we run to 7:00 p.m. Obviously, we're an early rising company, but 7:00 a.m. was a, was a concession to make sure that the neighbors, we're getting closer to them, so it was, was a benefit for us to start a little bit later. Saturdays, obviously, depending on demand, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's the field hours. The loading hours, where we load trucks, and the maintenance of the facility, which can be ongoing, is 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. But that really won't, you won't see much activity out in the field near the homes at that hour. That would be more where the stockpiling is at, grading of the roads, et cetera, et cetera. And we have a wash plant that is able to run 24 hours a day, but that's not crushing, that's not a lot of conveying, that's probably just more water movement. And just for perspective, if, if I could have a pointer to show you where, where the processing plant is from those property boundaries, the residential lines, it's at least 2,500 feet. So any noise that we are making early or late in the day is severely diminished by the distance that it carries before it gets to the property lines. And there are tree lines and berms too, as well. Setback zones, again, along the residential areas, along the Woods Creek and Glacier Ridge boundary, there's a 200-foot buffer that was actually gifted to those homeowners associations as a permanent setback. And we can mine up to that, and we can stockpile material, screening material on those, on those properties. Is there a question? And then the North Mine, which is out of view of that photograph, has a separate conditional use permit at the city, and that expires in 2022. That material would be conveyed underneath Route 120. There's a tunnel that already exists that takes it to the processing plant. So the processing plant essentially sits in the center of where all the remaining reserves are, and it's conveyed to that site. You can go to the next slide. I went through those.
You blew that for me.
Sorry, Derek. The other three slides are really aerials that probably tell just the picture of where we are and where we've been. This was taken in 2018 mid-season, and during the process of negotiating the conditional use permit, we had done our best estimate of where we would mine. This isn't by year, this is just by direction, of which way we would likely mine the above-water reserves, which are in red, and the below-water reserves, which are in blue. Below water means below the shallow water aquifer, which if you take the material out, it's displaced by the aquifer, and it will fill up with water, thereby creating a lake. Again, we're estimating how big that lake might be based on the borings we've advanced over time. It's not a perfect science. It could end up being two small lakes, it could be a lake with a, with an island in the middle, just depending on how the deposit on Mother Nature left the sand and gravel 50,000 years ago. But you'll see, there's a lettering correspondence to these. So back in 2018, while we were negotiating, we had actually already stripped a little bit of cell E and worked A. I'm looking at the red locks. So we ended up mining A to the north and into B, probably cooked a little bit of D and E at the time. You can see a little bit of a lake that was being formed in cell U at the bottom also in 2018. And then you can go to the next slide, which will show you 2019. So mid-2019, it's the same overlay. You can see where the lake in cell U is extended into V. You can also see where A is completely mined out above the surface. You can see where cell B has been greatly mined out and, and actually, some of it was stripped and not mined, as was a little bit of D at the time, and I don't know if there was just a seam that they chased because of material demands, if it was a core seam. Again, the overall amendment to the conditional use permit was to make sure that cell E, which is a backward-shaped L, was there to protect the neighbors. So we're doing everything we can to mine in, in a sequence whereby we can always leave a high wall between us and the neighbors as much as we can, but it is sometimes difficult. And eventually, we will have to strip all of the remaining land, otherwise, we're going to be having safety problems, because we'll have too narrow of an area to be stripping with haul trucks. So we'll probably get to that in another year or two, that they'll finish stripping everything. But you can see where we've mined to the north, and you can see, and where cell C is, is where we're headed to naturally going next, if you go to the next slide, which shows you where we plan to go this year. The good news is, because it was such a mild winter, once we lived past Halloween, we were able to continue stripping all the way to Christmas. And in doing so, we were able to open up an area, probably that will cover the rest of this year. With a little luck, we won't have to bring like dirt trucks and haul trucks out, which is, I think, as much of an intrusion to the neighbors as anything. They work early. We have to take the dirt and go right behind their houses to deposit it on the south in these property lines in order to reclaim. So this year, unless business really picks up and we need to open up additional cells for the dirt, the stripping process will be done. So the yellow represents the area that we plan to- Actually, we can't, we can't go within 500 feet of the property. So right now, there's a huge distance if we can see. That crusher is 1,000, 1,200 feet away from the property line. We're working then like west of the woods, and then probably a little bit south. As you can see, we've actually stripped part of the property we planned to mine with the yellow. So you better remember, stripping is done, and then there's still another- We just agreed where it was going to be, because that's why we did the reverse L. We're always going to stay 500 feet away, which is, that's probably the most important thing, is the distance. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes?
Are, are the trucks still going, do they, are they below the berm or on the berm at this point?
The, the ones that haul the dirt, the actual, the haul trucks would actually haul the dirt on the inside, on the mine side of the berm, but in order to deposit it all the way along, like the Burning Tree residents, they have to run all the way along. Now, the berm is 10, 12, 14 feet high, but they still have to run, you know, it's not every minute of the day, but when, when they're stripping, that's when they're, they're, you know, we're moving that dirt to fill in. So we're slowly closing both corner, I guess, heading towards that point. I can't tell you exactly how far they've come, because that photo, let's see, that was taken in December. So I think they were hauling along the east property line. I think they were filling that in. So they've kind of taken chunks at a time to do that. And eventually, before you know it, that whole piece will be finished. We obviously have to open up more cells to take the dirt there. Just a couple of bullet points I had added that were permitted by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, where we have to post bonds to guarantee site restoration. We also have duplicate bonds, in some cases with the city. Each permit with the state has an assignment of dollars per acre, and then the city of McHenry has a specific dollar amount, which is really designed to be there at the, at the end of the process. We are always planning ahead as far as stripping activities go, under the new amended ordinance. We are not allowed to strip between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and we volunteered that. Typically, we don't want to be doing it when it's that hot out. We don't want to be there early in the season when we're opening up cells right before we're supposed to mine them. Just money management, and it just makes more sense to be doing all that stuff while people's windows are closed. Restoration is continuous. Again, we don't like to double-handle dirt, it's a very expensive process, so when we put strippings in a truck, we like to have a destination where it's going to go in its final place for restoration. And the underlying zoning of the South Mine is RS1, which is residential one acre lots. So ultimately, whether it's one lake or two lakes, or a lake with an island in the middle, or whatever, Mother Nature will decide that, but ultimately, there will be some beautiful single-family homes there when it's done. And with that, that's an update on, on the mine plan, but it's open for questions. I'll miss any.
Okay. I, I know you're not running it, but you lease a portion close to the entranceway for the asphalt plant, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and the company that leases it from you is?
Current contract.
Current, and, and do you know what, how extended that lease time is with them?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Because I manage land. So currently-
Okay.
Our agreement with current is a three-year lease with two one-year options.
Okay.
And that lease took effect December 1st of last year.
Last year. Okay, so your second year into three, and then you got the two that you can extend?
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I think it would be a joint option, obviously. If, if, I'm sure we would love to have a permanent customer there.
Sure.
Yes.
All right, thank you. How much here?
One of the things that we were going to report on too was complaints to the city, and then complaints to the plant. Do we have any of those?
I do, I do, actually. So this agreement was finished in January of 19. The first complaint I received was August of 19, and I received one, two, three, four, five, six total throughout the seven months. And the, the majority of them are, was dust at the gravel pit entrance on 120. So I did go down there and talk to-
Jason?
Jason, who gave me their, their reports on the sweeping contractor that they have out there. And I obviously didn't notice any, an unusual amount of dust at the entrance. I sat out there and I watched. But they are watering down the haul road and 120 and sweeping 120 at least three times a week, as they're supposed to. So I just asked them to get on it and get the sweeper out there that day, and they did, they did do that. So I have one asphalt plant noise complaints, and then I have, there was a mowing complaint for berm's not being mowed, which Randy got on right away and went out there and-
I was going to explain that.
Right.
That we were working with a couple of the neighbors. There was some honeysuckle that had kind of gotten crazy through the fence, and we ended up contracting with McKitt to go in there and spray herbicides and mow down. There was some thistles that were near our guy's swimming pool, and some honeysuckle that had overgrown, so we took care of that. It was probably a $4,000 project, but we made, the berm was cleaned up and no more complaints. So, yeah.
How was the communication between, you know, between you two in regards to-
Oh, it was, it was very good.
It goes you to Randy, Randy back and forth?
Well, I like to go right down to the plant and talk to the operator.
Gotcha.
As opposed, because Randy's house was there, so he gave me the right to go down there and talk to them, and those guys-
And you have Doug's cell phone number, I believe.
Yep, yep. I have both their cell phone numbers.
Doug's the GM out there.
He's the plant manager.
I imagine.
So did you receive any direct complaints?
I guess just the neighbor with the honeysuckle, and that's because we are-
That's all that you got, correct?
Yeah, that's it. Yep. And that would be on Burning Tree. That was resident of Burning Tree. I did not hear from anybody from Glacier Ridge or from Wood Creek.
I will say that a lot of our complaints in the past were dust complaints, and last year was a rather wet season. You know, it was, we had a pretty wet summer, so that may have contributed to less complaints. But I, I had, Randy did supply us with the, the dust tester. But I had, Randy did supply us with the dust tester.
Next discussion item is 7B, which is non-highway vehicles, golf carts, and UTVs. Go ahead and pass this off to Chief Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff. After receiving numerous inquiries within the community regarding the operation of non-highway vehicles on city streets, staff had brought forward this topic for discussion on the November 18th city council meeting. At this meeting, staff had the opportunity to review this concept of non-highway vehicle ordinances with city council and multiple members of the public. The results of the November discussion confirmed that council and the public was in support of this new ordinance. During this council meeting, staff was given direction from council on regulations regarding topics such as the location of use, the location restrictions, registration requirements, safety equipment, time restrictions, and time of year usage, and more. In January, staff had the opportunity to draft a proposed ordinance based on the input that we received, and then subsequently met with the available council in February to review the proposed ordinance for additional input and revisions. In addition, an interactive GIS map was also composed as part of that ordinance, and it's available to council tonight along with large scale up here. The results of all those meetings allowed staff to make additional revisions, and what we've listed for you in this discussion item is the proposed, is with all the proposed revisions for council's further discussion tonight. And I'm available to answer any questions that council may have.
Mayor Chief? No one for, up for discussion by council? Any questions, comments?
I noticed that there's only one crossing at 120.
Correct, Meadow and Ellen.
Why couldn't we get something further east? Because we don't want to take it through the downtown area, or what?
We don't have any, yeah, we're avoiding, based on what council's input was, was that we, and along with staff too, the police department's not really, we don't, wouldn't, we think it's a safety issue with allowing downtown. So really, there's the only feasible crossing, because you can only cross 120, you cannot drive on it. So it takes out Oak Drive, it takes out Crystal Lake Road, it takes out, obviously, Front Street, which then moves you into the downtown business district for a crossing.
I realize that, but you realize that you're looking at 70% of the city has to go down through Whispering Oaks to get to, cross 120?
That would be the only way to cross 120.
There's gotta be another way to do it, because...
Legally, there would be.
Whether you gotta take it down Green Street or whatever, just a block or two, but all I'm getting at is, that's ridiculous, because you got somebody that's way down on the south end, let's say just east of here, wanting to get up on the north end, they'd have to come all the way around, cross 31, cross Crystal Lake Road, travel through the entire subdivision of Whispering Oaks to get up to Meadow and 120, and then come around and have to run through Lake Le Park.
Well, the goal isn't to have to move all over, it's to further neighborhoods.
I'm sorry?
The goal's not to move all over the whole city.
But that's how we have it set up.
No, it's where you're, that's why you don't have access over here on 120, because it's, it's, the whole goal of this was for, they wanted it in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, except it isn't within the neighborhoods. From here to there.
But this neighborhood can go in their neighborhood.
I understand it can go in their neighborhood, but it can also go this way, that way, and that way, and that way.
Sure.
Exactly. And that's, that's my point. I mean, everything here wants to go to, winds up in that one, one intersection. One intersection across the 120 in the area it's at, and that is a dangerous intersection, Meadow and 120. We also have one at Winding Creek and Crystal Lake Road, which brings that traffic right through in front of Riverwood School, which kind of concerns me a little there. I don't know, do we really need two of them over there? We've got Dartmore. Do we really need one at Winding Creek?
That was based on the input that we had with the council members when they met me. And again, it's, the idea was to try to give as many options as we possibly could with control of the intersections being stoplights.
I mean, I, I see, you know, and yeah, you're looking at some of these vehicles, you know, a lot of neighborhoods, that's all they can do is stay in their neighborhood. I mean, there's nobody that's south of Bull Valley that can go further north, because there's no crossing there.
They cannot, because there's sections of Bearville Road that are not in the city limits, and we don't have the authority to allow them to drive on those roadways.
Right. I'm just saying.
We originally started out with allowing it on Bearville Road so they could cross over Charles Miller, but there's a section of Bearville Road between Charles Miller and just, just south of Ellen. That's not in the city limits, along with another section by Director Schmidt's house, so...
Is that one of those pockets that I was talking about that comes back to bite us?
We discussed that too when we met about annexation of certain properties. Currently, there's a House bill on the floor right now for consideration in committee that would allow us to allow golf carts and ATVs on that section of roadway if it were to pass, but I'm not holding my breath that that's gonna pass.
Not ATVs.
Excuse me?
Not UTVs.
Non-highway vehicles, excuse me.
One of the biggest reservations that I have, more than anything else, is the fact that you're talking to have it till 9:30 till, I believe it was November 1st?
Yep.
Why so late in the season?
That was the input I received from the rest of the council.
Okay, well, all I can tell the council is, is the fact that you take it to November 1st, you're looking at all these vehicles traveling at night, because by that time, you're already looking at 6:30, 7 o'clock at start.
We picked up, we picked the date of November 1st...
Chief, excuse me, let me finish, okay, then you can put your input in. But what I'm trying to say is, is the fact that we're looking at, one of the last days is Halloween. So you're gonna have, the night of Halloween, kids jumping around all over the place at night, and you're gonna have all these little ATVs running through the, through the neighborhoods.
That was, that was the point. Directly because we wanted to make sure that they come out on Halloween, and they all had the proper safety equipment with lights and everything else, and most of the time, we limit the amount of trick-or-treating time anyways to 8:00 PM or 7:00 PM, depending on the hour.
I mean, you know, these vehicles are, some people will use them very respectfully and will use them for transportation, and a lot of people will use them for joyriding and everything else. I mean, you know, there's different types of individuals that drive these type of vehicles. It bothers me the fact that, number one, being so late in the season, you could have snow on the ground by then. We have had snow on the ground by November 1st.
There's a clause in there for inclement weather.
Well, what's inclement weather? But that's left to, you know...
I'll read it for you.
Some guys on the road, and then you're gonna tell them to get off the road because...
Yeah, we would enforce it, absolutely, absolutely.
So I'm just saying, you know, I just think we should just need to back that up until October 1st or something like that. It takes Halloween away from the reservations. It, it, it doesn't get as dark until October. And I just think backing that up a month to October 1st would, not only that, but I, and granted, I'm a little older than a lot of the people that'll drive those things.
It's much more of a stay.
You know, you have those vehicles so wide open that it gets pretty chilly in October sometimes, especially at night. So I just, like I said, I just feel that to some extent I'd like to see it backed up till 1st of October instead of November.
Aldwin, no?
So I wanna thank you for your work. I like the finished product. We had a lot of conversation. I want to speak to a couple of different points. The crossing points, I think, are consistent with putting them at traffic signals, and I think that was important, because that does add the element of safety. So I do like the cross. And to Aldwin Glab's point, we couldn't get everywhere, and I know in our meeting, we spent, I don't know, Monty, two hours on the map trying to give everybody everything, and it was impossible. You have obstacles in your way. So we certainly did our best with the maps to try, to try to do that. As far as the timing and the dates, I think I'm real good with the dates, and I pushed Chief Burke on the timing. He originally had the ordinance till dark, and I was real concerned about that language, till dark. It's easier for me to look at my phone and know that 9:30 is coming than when dark is coming. So I said, give me a time specific, and I can figure out where I have to be by that time versus, I don't know, when the sun's going down, if I've had, you know, too much fun. So I'm grateful that we have a time specific and a date specific. And what kept going back in my mind during that conversation is this is a one-year ordinance, which lets us look at it, figure out what worked, what didn't work, and tweak it if we choose to renew it or continue it. So I would like to see us get it moving forward, review it as we need to review it, say, gosh, that didn't turn out how we thought it was gonna turn out, and come back to it. But I think we've all put a lot of time and energy into looking at what should be workable. We're different than Johnsburg. We have city streets that we can't have alternative vehicles on, but I think we've given enough latitude to where we can get them and where we can't get them. So I appreciate that, and I think we've done a good job on first blush, and it's not gonna be perfect, but that's why they get a UTV too, and they can enforce it as much as they want. Right?
We will enforce all the rules of this ordinance. So when you're driving on the roadway, you're on the roadway. So things like speeding tickets or reckless driving, going through a stoplight, you get a ticket just like if you're in a car, you go up to Branch Court, and they'll suspend your driver's license for it. It's a motorized vehicle on the roadway, they have to abide by the rules of the road, so. Plus all the additional ordinance rules that we instituted in the proposal.
Aldwin Shaffer?
Just to check something here, chief, I think the approved intersections are missing on the list.
Which intersection?
The one at McCollum Lake and Blake, or McCollum Lake and, isn't there one up there?
Riverside?
McCollum Lake and Blake, and McCollum Lake and Old Mill Ponds are both, we would consider those approved intersections because we're allowing the golf carts on McCollum Lake Road at short distances.
That's not on your list on page number three. That's what I mean, it's missing.
The last one's McCollum Lake and Riverside?
Right.
McCollum Lake and Blake?
It's missing J. There's 10 intersections, and there's only nine listed. I just want to make sure it's on.
Yeah, you know what, because it's not, it's really not a crossing, and that's why it wasn't put there, but if you look up in, on prohibited streets and locate, I'm sorry, not prohibited streets, but you look up to permitted streets, you'll see under A, McCollum Lake Road from Blake Boulevard to Old Mill Lane. So it's not a designated intersection where you cross it.
Okay.
It's a, it's just basically a right and a right.
I just saw it marked in yellow on the map, and it wasn't listed as a, it was marked as an intersection.
We can, we can definitely update, we can definitely update the map.
It's up to you.
Aldwin Shaffer?
Aldwin, I know you kind of stole a lot of my thunder, but we were just gonna be, you know, there's, there's only a certain amount of crossings, and we kind of went back and forth on what we could do, and, and the chief kind of pulled the reins in a little bit and said, you know, let's take a look at it this way, and, and for the most part, a lot of the council members agreed with it. And this is a, this is a neighborhood thing, okay? I wanna, I wanna stress that, and I also want to stress that it's, it's up to us, it's up to you folks out there, that this is a one-year test. And Chief Burke stepped out and went after this after he received enough messaging from our constituents about this. So, I, you know, just, please, please, the utmost safety needs to be taken with this. Because, you know, if, you know, if something occurs, it's, like I said, it's just a one, one-trick pony right now, so let's, let's abide by these rules and make sure we go in for our test and get things registered correctly, and understand that, you know, we just need to be on top of things. I really, I can't stress it enough. And then come next spring at this time, we'll be reviewing it. Maybe it'll take five seconds, but just so you know, it does come in front of the council next year for review, and it's, it's on us. That's all I'll say. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Aldwin Glab, can you, I'm gonna take your pen away. Thanks. Any other questions, comments by council? No? Is there any public, like to make a public comment, or?
I'm curious.
Step up to the podium, state your name and address, public record, and blood type.
TJ Herkis, 6305 Long Drive. I'm actually just curious as to what the plan is. How close can we get to downtown? I mean, in the summertime, I was thinking we would be able to take these to get to Riverwalk, some businesses, some dinner. Are we talking that even close?
No, the closest, basically the closest you're gonna get is Green Street and John Street. So the whole idea when, when we first discussed, at least in this proposed copy, is we don't want the golf carts downtown. We don't want to mix alcohol and bars with golf carts and UTVs, not this first year. We need, we need to see how this goes, and we need to...
We're talking about dinner, bud.
Yeah, well, I understand, I understand. The downtown angled parking and everything else is just not conducive for, these are smaller vehicles. We don't want to see an accident where somebody's hurt in the first year of the ordinance. So that's, that's, so there's limited access on Green Street past John Street, and then there's limited access on Waukegan Road too.
Anywhere we can get a designated parking if you wanted to walk into downtown?
Not in this proposal.
East Campus, James Street is a school. Yeah, the school.
So can you, there is a map here if anybody wants to see it.
Yeah, there is a map. You wanna step up and take a look, whether, you know, wanna wait and take a look at the map before you leave. Any other comments by the public, questions? None? Anyone from council? Aldwin Glab?
Have we looked at, with the businesses, you're gonna say the private parking?
Excuse me?
Parking? Okay, they're not allowed to use the municipal parking lots, correct?
They are not allowed, other than this municipal parking lot.
Okay, what about city streets?
They can park legally on the side of the streets. If it's legal parking for a vehicle on the roadway, yes.
Okay. What about parking lots, such as, let's say, the Jewel Parking Lot, or?
No.
Can't get there.
They can't get there.
Okay, so, what do you mean, they can't get there? They can get there, the question is, is...
No, we have, we have it set where they have to turn right onto Oak, so they, we don't want them, the direction that council gave us was, they don't want them in the shopping complexes. This is a, at least the first year, was a recreational thing for people to move in and about their neighborhoods, to socialize with their neighbors. It's not a, was not a tool for people to drive to the downtown or to go shopping.
But the way we designed it, people could drive around the street ports of the city.
We, we did our best to allow them to flow from neighborhood to neighborhood. Without, with avoiding the downtown business area, and the business is a long one too.
Yeah. I can see certain streets just south of the downtown area being lined up with SUVs or non-SUVs.
Well, we're very limited on what we can do. If we restrict the use of a UTV or an ATV on Waukegan Road or even Main Street, then you're taking away the ability for people who might live on that street to participate in the ordinance, just because you're afraid that car, that ATVs or UTVs will park on that street and then walk into the downtown business district. So that's why we, we did prohibit some of the parking and the usage on Waukegan Road, but we did not do it on the west side, west of Green, because there's residences there, and we wanted to make sure that if they had a golf cart or a UTV, that they wanted to participate, they could at least pull out of the driveway, go left down to Third, make a left on Third, and work their way south again to a different part of their subdivision.
Well, all I can say is, I still feel, and I feel very strongly in the fact that we should back it up from November 1st to October 1st, and I can't support it without that, because I can't see people driving around in October when it's dark. It's not gonna be dark, we're starting to get dark, it's gonna be pitch black, and again, it's still legal to be out there on Halloween night, and I don't want to see that. How are we looking at that?
So, just, just a parking question, Chief Burke, that I guessed in my head I didn't think through. So in Florida, I get to park perpendicular to the curb, so that literally two golf carts could fit in the space of one car, one passenger car. Are we going to allow that, or are you looking at parallel parking, parallel to the curb, so it would be one...
If the road accommodates parallel parking, that's...
If the road accommodates parallel parking, that's what we would require. So most residential streets are all parallel parking. There is, we would not want them to do perpendicular or in angle just because the unit's smaller. We'd want them to pull up parallel to the curb and park it.
So if I drive over to John Street, park, and walk to DC Cubs for dinner, I will be parallel parking to the curb and leaving my vehicle sitting there. I would back it in on an angle, and somebody could be next to me. Perfect, got it. Thank you.
Question is, can you make it to my house?
I can get to your house.
I just wanna make sure.
We do.
Alderman Glad?
Chief, when you, you look at the ordinance and everything else, when you're looking at specifics that we have in here, it still reverts back to Illinois codes, driving codes, right? Like seat belts?
So seat belts, seat belts are an additional, that's an equipment violation that we were wrote under the local ordinance. So that's, if you get stopped and you don't have a seatbelt, A, you're not gonna get your registration unless you have a seatbelt. But if somebody's not wearing the seatbelt when they're operating, we're gonna stop and we're gonna cite you under the local ordinance. That wouldn't be a moving violation. But if you're speeding, and you get stopped speeding and you're not wearing a seatbelt, you're gonna get a local ordinance adjudication citation, and you're gonna get a speeding ticket, and you're gonna go to Branch Court for that, just as if you were driving in your car.
But as far as the seat belts go, they have to wear a seatbelt, correct?
Correct.
And that's per our ordinance or because of city code?
That's per our ordinance.
Well, it says we gotta have speed, uh, seat belts in there, but it doesn't say you have to wear them.
Yeah, we would enforce that under, that's, the inclusiveness is the Illinois Vehicle Code. We can enforce the entire Illinois Vehicle Code under the ordinance.
Okay, that's the point.
Which is everything from DUI to speeding to just regarding a stop control device, not wearing a seatbelt.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we, you know, there wasn't a loophole, Mr. Okay, thank you.
So not, not to belabor the parking idea, but I just wanna think...
I thought you said two...
She just wants to open all of City Council. I just wanna think this forward because...
They're not in Florida anymore, Jordan.
I just, what I just wanna think this forward because I think my friends are gonna use our vehicles a lot, right?
Yeah.
Right? So we all park downtown, and all of a sudden, our residents are not happy with us all parking downtown on Waukegan, May 1, because we have to park somewhere in order to walk to Green Street or the Riverwalk. So what kind of notice would be required to turn that into a, "You can't park your thing here"?
That's the city council authority. If you change the parking requirements on a, on a street in the city, that would go back to council. Right now, all the streets that allow parking between the hours of 6:00 AM and 2:00 AM are all identified. And all, you know, so, and if there's, if there, if there, if you don't allow it, it's already clearly marked and it's in our ordinance. So you, you'll see the streets you can park on, and which, most of them, it's a side that you can park on, and there's another side that you can't because the streets aren't that wide. And that's why I would say park parallel anyways because although they're skinnier than a car, give the roadway as much room as possible.
Because there's already been events and things that those parking regulations have been set up for already.
Yeah.
Especially within blocks of downtown, so...
So I just wanted to make sure that I understood the rules because I don't want the rules to change. And then my only other point to that is, we had left off the conversation, and I, I don't remember where we stopped with the, "We're not gonna post where they can go. We're gonna post where they can't go."
Yeah, so the city of, so to give you an example, the village of Johnsburg posts signage on all the streets where they can legally drive their golf carts. We're gonna do the exact opposite here in McKenna. We're gonna post signage where you can't. So it's very clear to the rider or the driver, you cannot be on the street or you cannot be in the section, and we can enforce it. Plus, it's a lot easier for us to have signs made and enforce the streets on that map that you can't ride on than the streets that you can. We would have to buy fifty times as many signs to try to enforce all those streets. It'd be very difficult. We've never had the signs up in time on May 1st if we had to do it that way.
And I just wanted to make sure that that's where you ended in your thought process.
That is where we ended in the thought process.
Yeah, because I think it's important that, again, not everybody's gonna have a map. And I think it's important that we have a visual aid that says you can't come here before you cross that barrier, and all of a sudden, you're in, oops, so...
That's the, the interesting thing of this map is an interactive map. So it will be on the city website. You can pull it up from your phone. You can zoom in, zoom out. It's a, it's a GIS interactive map. So the public will have access. If, if they have a smartphone, they'll have that. Don't do it while you're driving your golf cart.
Right, I've already got that.
You can pull over, and you can very easily look at and see very easily where you can and can't go. But in case you don't, we will have clearly signed where you cannot go.
Just wanted to make sure that ended up as part of the conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Could we ask if, you could use this tunnel to get to under 120 property?
You wanna say something?
I do.
All right.
More parking, more parking questions, I'm gonna kick the door. Can we park in East Campus?
Name and address.
Bill Wagner, McHenry Shores, 3213. Can we park in East Campus if we go downtown? That's a question for the school district. We couldn't, none of us have the authority to give permissions on people parking in private. That's probably a lot owned by the school district. They would have to authorize it or say it's okay. Okay, if they authorize it, would the police have a problem? We don't enforce private property, so we couldn't enforce parking there. Golf carts don't have seat belts. They would have to install, that's part of the ordinance.
You have to get a...
Part of the ordinance for that. And I live in the shores. Am I allowed to get out of my... No, you could cross over to Pebble Creek. But right now, that's as far as you can go because we don't have the authority to allow you to drive down Bearville Road. We don't own all the roadway. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Or you put it in a trailer, and you bring it right over here into the municipal lot, and you can...
Hey, there you go. I got a couple. Hi, Doug, thank you, Powersports. Are you, fees or permits or...
Yeah, so the, the proposal in this ordinance is a hundred dollars for the first-time registration, fifty dollars for every year after that, as long as the machine doesn't change. That covers the time for us to do the safety inspection, provide the permit, do a little background on the applicant, and make sure it's good. And then obviously, every year after that, as long as you're still using the same golf cart or the same machine with the same owner, it's obviously a little, it's short, and so we cut the price in half.
And then, like you've been saying, everything that a car has, right? Like signals?
Yeah, so the, the proposal that the council has tonight is turn signals, headlights, brake lights, taillights. The headlights have to be on, taillights have to be on at all times during the day, seat belts. And then there's a court, we did, we pulled the Red State Statue with some reflectors that are required on it as well.
Okay. Slow-moving vehicle?
Yeah, it's the triangle that sits on the back, has to be able to at least put it on while you're out riding in town. And then the reflectors are built into the turn signals and the taillights anyways. That meets that requirement.
Yeah, so you would have headlights at night?
You would. You'd have headlights whenever you run it. Even if it's at 10:00 in the morning, you gotta run your, with your headlights for safety reasons.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug. Any other questions, comments by the public? Alderman Schaefer?
I think, Mayor, you and Chief Burke might wanna have a class to go over all the regulations, so... Because this, they're gonna come out thinking that...
So, so one of the, one of the things that happens here, when they do apply, there's a form that's already been designed, thanks to Monty. And they'll, they'll fill out that form, then they'll get an appointment for their vehicle inspection. They will have, that, part of that form has the indemnification in it, along with an acknowledgement, the person doing the vehicle inspection will go over the entire ordinance with them, along with give them a copy of the ordinance. And they will sign off, acknowledge, and they receive both the copy of the ordinance and that it was reviewed with them, and they understand the rules behind it. So that will happen every single time.
I just, my only point with that, and I wasn't joking, was that I think when, once this, if it passes tonight, they're gonna expect whatever date it starts that you can just pull out and start driving, so... Because the mayor's gonna post it on social media if he wants an ordinance.
I'm staying off social media for a while.
So my point is, how do you get to those people who report this?
They don't have registration, they can't do it. So that's what's gonna get posted. So we'll get an influx of all the inspections, but we'll get them out there. That's why it was important for us to get this in front of council on March 2nd because we obviously wanna be able to advertise inspections during the month of April. And that also gives us time to get our signage installed, or Troy, time to get some signage installed. So we're prepared for May 1st.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just on the noise part, I know you said that they can't add on to their muffler system. What if it's the main muffler that is awful loud, you know?
If it's like a defective or an old muffler and it's loud, we're not gonna pass these.
Some of these companies, in order to sell something, will make it, I mean, I can remember a certain person looking at it and buying a, a different car about a year ago and just loved rubbing the heck out of it, and you could hear it a hundred miles down the road.
Yeah, that, that had some modified exhaust to it.
A little bit.
But so, if it's standard, it's not. We, we did the research on all the miniature carriers for the side-by-sides, plus the, obviously, golf carts, the majority of golf cart facilities are actually electric. They don't have new exhausts. So we're gonna, that will be part of the vehicle inspection. If, if it's too loud, we're not gonna give it a registration. We don't want people to be, that's the one thing we don't want. We don't want to come back and hear you guys say, eight months from now, you know what? It's just too loud. We're, we're tired of it. So we're gonna do as conservative we can right off the bat. So if they can't hear you while you're doing the inspection, then it's too loud, right? What?
Any other questions, comments by council? All right, moving on to the next item is 8A, approval of an ordinance amending Title VII, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter Two General Regulations by adding Section 3, 2, dash, uh, Section 7-2-5, Operation of Non-Vehicle, Non-Highway Vehicles on City Streets. I'm looking for a motion for it. Alderman?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alderman Hardy? Discussion? CNN, clerk, please call the law.
Alderman Miller? Big yes. All right. Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavat?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is...
We'll have a little thing called Shamrock the Fox that happens downtown McHenry. It'll be March 14th and 15th. On March 14th, we'll have, start off the day with a Kiwanis Club Shamrock Shuffle on East Campus. And then we'll have the, the Dying of the River and the Parade at 11:00. The event grounds will open at 11:00 and go to 11:00 PM. With entertainment throughout the day, we'll have the Open Carry once again this year throughout downtown from 11:00 to 6:00 PM. And then on Sunday, we have event grounds open at noon and go until 7:00 o'clock. 7:00 o'clock will conclude the event with a fireworks show. So we're excited to be bringing that forward again with the support of council and looking for a bigger and better year this year.
Awesome. Thanks, Bill, and your entire team, too. It's awesome. Any other staff reports? Nothing? All right, just my report. I wanna thank all of you for that, did meet with Chief Burke regarding the, the new ordinance regarding UTVs and golf carts. You know, I just wanted to say something, you know, one of you did not, did not meet with the chief. It's very disheartening and concerning that we try to work together as a team, come into these council chambers, and actually have everything figured out before we come here. And the one person that votes no does not even respond to the chief or I in regards to having a meeting to go, go over these concerns that you supposedly have. And I, I, how are we supposed to work together if you're gonna sit here and not be part of the team to have these discussions? So as far as I'm concerned, you come in here, and you ask everyone to listen to you. I don't think anyone should be listening to you. So that's just my opinion. So the next item on the agenda is city council comments. Alderman?
Yeah, now I'll respond to that. That's the fact that I brought it up at the time, and that's the fact that we should've had all the discussions here, not individually one time, one at a time or two at a time with the chief. We could've had the entire discussions here, and it should've been brought up before. This one decides to change this, and this one wants this, and that one wants that. Why can't we do it out in an open forum? Why does it have to be back in...
Everything worked out perfect.
Everything does.
Everyone was on the same...
I hope everything works out perfect, okay? Again, I only voted against it because of the, the timeframe as far as at night and the date. And I, I don't think I was asking too much to, to reduce it to October 1st. Sorry you feel that way, but you know what? I'm gonna elect an official just as you are. You might be the mayor, but I am an Alderman. And I do have that, that ability to make that choice just as well as you.
Sure. Any other city council comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Ross, this is probably for you. Are we doing any political sign removal? Or, and if so, where do those end up? Or did you decide not to do that?
No, we don't. We don't. They end up with the...
And a lot of times, we use how, how the owners, the business district, they like, they're different from the stop control. They often give it to some business owners, or... Because I'm assuming some of those that end up over at the, to miss weekend like this aren't just people grabbed by, or sign grabbed, they're in business, they're probably... And then also, do we have any city sign updates with the two choices that we had? Or four choices that have been added? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Promotion here. Alderman Santee? I will big that motion second. Alderman Schaefer? Clerk, please call the law.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavat?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller? Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone. Happy night. Hey, Doug.